Well, good evening. Soon as I turn my microphone on, there we go. Welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, August 20th, 2019. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I'm sure we'll have a very stimulating meeting, as always. Roll call by the city clerk. Michaela doing this for her first time. Let's see how she does.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
All council members are present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda, including additions or deletions?
There are no changes that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak to council on any issues that are not on the agenda? Seeing none. We'll move for the city council consideration of the minutes of August 6th, 2019. Special city council meeting and the August 6th, 2019 regular city council meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special city council meeting on August 6th, 2019, and the regular city council meeting at the same time.
I'll second that. Please vote.
That was her nice way of saying, "Mayor."
All right. Resolution 2019-21. City council consideration of resolution 2019-21. A resolution authorizing filing of the Colorado Department of Local Affairs grant application for the gray and black market marijuana enforcement grant program. Kendall Kramer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. Before you tonight is a resolution for your consideration to file an application with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for the gray and black market marijuana enforcement program. This is a program created by state statute to address the illegal cultivation and distribution of gray and black market marijuana, illegal unlicensed marijuana. This program is funded through marijuana tax cash proceeds through legal marijuana, and it is used and provided to local governments and district prosecutors to investigate the illegal distribution and cultivation of marijuana. It covers all kinds of things, including personnel, overtime, contractual services, equipment, supplies, travel, and a number of other expenses. We learned about this grant opportunity last year, in which we applied, and at that time we were expecting only to receive about $40,000, and we ended up receiving $70,000. That $70,000 was used towards equipment for the police department, as well as wages for the drug task force to investigate illegal marijuana here in the city of Montrose and throughout Montrose County. So this upcoming round is due August 31st. The resolution before you authorizes the filing of the application, acknowledges that we will spend the money appropriately, and that there are no tabor implications, as the city has debruised state and federal grant funds from being subject to tabor, and it allows the city manager to execute the grant contract. That being said, it's a fairly simple grant. We apply for it. The administration is fairly simple as well, just a couple of reports, and we'll look forward to using this for additional police equipment, as well as drug task force wages. And if there's any questions, I can take them. Thank you.
I can accept public comment on this. Seeing none, council?
So Kendall, there's no city match required for this grant?
That's correct. There is not.
Thank you.
Kendall, again, how much do you think we'll receive on this?
It did not say this time. I know that in the last round, I believe there were six or seven million dollars statewide. And then again, like I said, we were anticipating only to get $40,000, and we ended up with $70,000, so it's hard to say how much we'll get during this round.
But this money will go for public safety concerns?
That's correct, yes. It'll go towards the police department for the investigation of illegal marijuana.
Okay. I guess I'd just like to point out, here's another way we help fund our police department.
Thank you.
And with that, I would take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-21 as presented.
Second.
And please vote. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number eight. River Bottom Drive reconstruction project contract. City council consideration of a construction contract and surveying slash engineering support contracts totaling $1,033,458.79 for construction of the River Bottom Drive reconstruction project. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So since we've discussed at work session, the only thing that's changed is the schedule, and I'll go into that, but also I'll give a quick synopsis for anybody who's tuning in and wasn't here for the work session. So this is for the reconstruction of River Bottom Drive between Rio Grande and essentially the first pond there. I think some people call it the gazebo pond, or anybody know what it's officially called? But that first pond there is you're going down into River Bottom Park on River Bottom Drive. This is a group project, another great group project with the Montrose Recreation District. They will be redoing Holly Park, starting hopefully this winter, and at the same time we'll be doing River Bottom Drive, with the idea these both being completed next year. So the project will widen River Bottom Drive to include, you know, through lanes in each direction, formal on-street parking in each direction, sidewalks on both sides, and piping of that ditch. In addition to squaring up the intersection a little bit, adding some push-button flashing crossings for the pads on the rec trail there. That rec trail crossing currently is at a skew, and with the new connect trail coming online, we'll see even more people on it, so we want to increase the safety of that. So for anybody who's gone out of there during soccer, you can now get out, and you won't get flooded or washed away by a ditch, so it's a lot of benefit. The bidding for this project, we put it out, got a really good showing and really tight cluster of bids, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight different bids. The little bidder was Skip Houston, who has done a lot of work with the city. Prior to my time here, I've been here for about six years, but prior to my time here, they did a lot of work with the city and are kind of reemerging into this market under new ownership. Their owner is Marty Guy, is here tonight. We worked a lot with him on other projects, so we're fully comfortable that they're able to, or qualified to do this job. So they are the 988,000. The balance, the 45,000 is with Delmont Consultants, also here, their president Steve Stevenson. Their local design and surveying company, they did the design for this project, so we like to have them on call for any issues that come up, and to also handle all the project surveying, so we have continuity between design and construction. That amount is on an as-needed basis, so we only pay for what we use. The financials of that, so the, like I said, we got a grant from DOLA partnering with the rec district. It was a $500,000 grant. We'll be splitting that 50/50, so that'll take 250,000 off of this. There's also some other partners that have helped financially to make this a reality. Some of those are DMEA, who will be undergrounding all of the power through there and upgrading it. The Montrose County, who's donated some gravel to the project, and then several other partners that have contributed cash to see this become a reality. And then, timing-wise on the money, so of this 1.03 million, we probably will spend about half of that this year. The project will carry over into next year. The idea being, or, so we're looking to start this coming Monday. We'll close River Bottom Drive, detour people to Apollo. That'll stay closed through March, at which time the road will be opened in time for the spring programming as a gravel road, and then sometime in there, once the hot plants open in the spring, we'll do a several-day closure to do the final paving. So the product, with the product spanning this year and the spring of next year, we figure we'll spend about half of those costs this year, and then the remaining in 2020, which there is a line proposed in the 2020 budget for the balance next year. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from council? I can accept public comment. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to award a construction contract in the amount of 988,458.79 to Skip Houston Construction, and an engineering support and survey stakeout contract in the amount of $45,000 on an as-needed time and materials basis to Delmont Consultants.
I'll second.
And please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item number nine. Uncompagre pedestrian bridge construction contract. City council consideration of the construction contract with ConSci Incorporated in the amount of $397,570.80 for replacement of the pedestrian bridge over the Uncompagre River at Ogden Road. And Jim Shy, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I have a recommendation for you for a new bridge at the end of Ogden Road near Home Depot. So it's a pedestrian bridge that's there. It was, the current bridge is about 60 years old, it's made out of railcar. There's a lot of concerns with it. The abutments are undermining, the bridge structure itself is in an unknown condition, just very old, and it has issues with span over the river, too, as far as it doesn't meet FEMA requirements for the floodplain. So many issues. It's definitely in need of replacement, so we put it out for bid. We did receive three bids on it. ConSci was the lowest bid, and they are at Grand Junction, so they are somewhat local. And they're, and they were significantly lower than any other prices we did receive. So the new bridge will be 100-foot span, which is about 40 feet longer than what's there. So there'll be new abutments poured into the bank, about 20 feet in on each side from where they're at now. One that gets the span over the river that's needed for the FEMA requirements, and also it's just a much more stable area for the abutments to be, instead of right in the river. It'll be 10 feet wide, concrete path, it'll be a very similar to bridge to what is over by Cerise Park that goes between Cerise and Reclam Metals. It'll be a very similar bridge to that. And there are no other changes from this from when we discussed at work session, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if they've come up.
Jim, I do have one question, and I'm sorry it didn't come up before work session. I've had people ask me, if we ever decide to lengthen Ogden Road and have it go up over the top of Sunset Mesa, would, now it'll take definitely a vehicular highway bridge. Would that replace this pedestrian bridge?
I would think so, likely. It's probably right in that same path. And maybe Scott can talk to it more. I know that's been talked about, and I think this does align with the easement that goes over Hogback, so I think it's in that alignment. It'd be very close.
And the hope would be, if it ever does, that we don't have to. If the easements can be worked out, I think right now it's kind of right in the center of it, but if, when that final, that road alignment's finalized, ideally we could have the road and pedestrian corridor separate. If the landowners are, if the acquisitions allow it.
Thank you.
I can accept public comment on this. Seeing none, any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I went out and looked at this bridge over the weekend, and I have to say, 60-year-old bridge, it's ingenious, the people who build it, and the fact that it's lasted this long, but clearly it needs to be replaced. And I didn't actually cross it, I was kind of afraid to, but I just want to say, those people who built it back in the day, it was really neat and serves a great purpose for 60 years, so that's pretty incredible. Thanks for the work on this, appreciate it.
Yeah, it served a great purpose. It was actual gravel trucks that used to drive across that.
Wow, that's incredible.
And then it was a wooden top.
Yeah.
The surface was really bad wood.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a construction contract with ConSci Inc. in the amount of $397,578.80 as presented.
I'll second that. And please vote. And the final action item. Intergovernmental agreement. City council consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between Montrose County and the city of Montrose for the 2019 coordinated election on November 5, 2019. And Mr. Elcorn and Ms. Piccolo, Del Piccolo, excuse me.
So pretty standard, straightforward IGA about their election. The county always does a fantastic job running our elections for us, and they're set up and equipped to do so. This particular IGA just said, "City, do cover any and all expenses of the election," and Lisa and I were a little bit nervous. We don't like asking city council to sign a blank check. Normally, they give us a not-to-exceed amount, and we were estimating the election will cost about $25,000, unless we have, you know, recounts hanging chads, some weird election issue. We asked county to give us, even if it's high, give us some amount that we know that we can refer to council. They came back and said that they will make an addendum to have the IGA read not to exceed 35,000. So I am asking council to approve this for the mayor's signature contingent on a not-to-exceed amount being added.
And this expense just covers the city portion? If there are other entities that have ballot issues, they will also pay their share?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And that's, I think, part of why county's a little nervous, you know, because, you know, will a special district or something throw in at the last minute or not?
Right, or, like I would imagine that if the school district doesn't have a race, then they don't pay part of it, and if they do have a race, then they would be part of it, thus affecting our portion?
Absolutely.
So, and just to be clear, this is for anticipation of our ballot issue on the safety, police safety?
That is correct.
So this is just the preparatory work necessary to, but it doesn't yet talk about ballot language and any of that stuff?
That's my other circle of hell.
Okay. Thank you.
I can accept public comment. Seeing none. Any other questions or comments from council? I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Montrose County and the city of Montrose for the 2019 coordinated election as presented.
And I'll second it.
Please vote. Next up is Chelsea White with sales use and excise tax report and the second quarter budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to start off just by making a quick clarification. I understand that a question came up today at a different meeting. So if you're following along in the council packet on page 28, I believe it is, under the hotel excise tax.
Excuse me, Chelsea, can you move the microphone closer to you, please? Thank you.
So on page 28, under hotel excise tax, the number for the prior year 2018, year-to-date, shows 41,993. That's only January through June, and that is how we normally do the monthly report every month, but I understand that that caused a little bit of confusion. So if you wanted to see the year-to-date 2018 total, you would have to add up the rest of the numbers that are showing there for July through December. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes, but I think it's generally confusing.
So we'll look into whether we need to maybe change our formatting a little bit, but I did want to clarify that for tonight's purpose.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you give me what that exact number is?
About 108,000, I believe.
They've always been like that. Because, they've always been like that, so that you can see at the end of June where you are relative to collections for last year. So comparing the first six months of 2019 to 12 months of 2018 doesn't tell you anything, so they've always been like that.
Right. So I'm not sure, maybe we need to add another column or something. So for 2018, the year-to-date number was 108,458.
And that's why it says year-to-date and not year total.
Okay, so as far as sales use and excise taxes for June of 2019, I'm going to jump into the presentation now if there's no further questions. So as you all know, sales and use taxes are 3% of the city's sales tax rate. In June of 2019, retail sales were up 7.6%. Construction use tax was up 17.6% compared to June of 2018. Use and auto ta, or, use and auto tax were down 15%, but then total collections were actually up 6% compared to last year. And that's a total budget variance of 4%, so overall, we're looking pretty good compared to last year. So then we get to the year-to-date sales and use tax compared to 2018, so we are halfway through the year. So retail sales tax is up 5.2% or 383,000. Construction use is down about 16.1% or 51,000. Use and auto use tax is also down just a little bit, 3.9% or 24,000. And then total collections are, like I said, up from 2018, 3.7% or 309,000. And that is a budget variance of a positive 7.6% or 612,000. So then we move into the rec center. As you know, in 2014, city voters passed an additional 0.3% tax, and the city collects that and remits it to the rec center every month. So in June of 2019, we collected 170,486 for the rec center. That was up 5.8% compared to last year. And then year-to-date, we've collected 865,620, which is up 3.3% overall. Moving into the excise taxes, hotels have an additional excise tax of 0.9%, whereas restaurants add an additional 0.8% to the city's sales tax. So in June of 2019, hotel excise taxes were up 7.3%, which is awesome. Restaurant excise was up 14.4%, bringing total collections up 12.5% with a budget variance of 15.3. Year-to-date compared to 2018, hotel excise taxes are up 14.6%, which is about $6,000. Restaurant excise tax is up 4.8%, which is about 10,000, and then total excise taxes were up about 6.4% or 16,000. And that's a budget variance of 8.1% or $20,000. Retail sales enhancement, I think as most people know, in 1990, the vendors decided that they were going to give up a portion of their fee to the city to help fund the retail sales in the city. And in June, we collected 34,489, which was up 6.9% compared to 2018. And then year-to-date, we've collected 173,117, which is up 4.2%. Do you have any questions? Okay. Okay, so then, moving into the quarterly report. As you know, I'm presenting on quarters one, quarter one and quarter two of 2019 thus far. So in your packet, I believe this begins on page 34. So I just wanted to do a brief rundown of the major funds of the city. So thus far, for quarter one and two, the general fund has collected 49.8% of the revenues that we had budgeted, and then the general fund has expended 45.2% of budgeted expenditures. So we're right on track as far as the general fund goes. Jumping down into the enterprise funds, the water fund has collected 44.3% of budgeted revenues. We're thinking that probably has to do with the rainy spring and summer that we've had. We're just down a little bit from last year that was particularly dry. And then expenses year-to-date are at 32.8%. So I think some of the capital projects that we have planned, we'll see that number jump up in the third and fourth quarter. The sewer fund has collected 63.6% of their budgeted revenues. That number is largely due to the sale of Banner Road, so that's really bumping it up. And then expenses are 33.8% of budgeted expenditures, so same thing, I think you'll see that number increase in quarter three and four. Trash and recycling is looking really good. They're at 50.6% of budgeted revenues, and then 36.4% of expenses budgeted. The golf course is also looking really good. They're at 53.8% of budgeted revenues. I believe a lot of that is due to the program that they did in late 2018 with the pre-sale of the yearly passes, so I think that really helped. And then expenditures are right where they should be, at 50.4% of expended, of expenditures. And then, of course, if you look further in the packet, we've got the breakout of all of our minor funds. So if you have any questions, feel free to let Shaney or I know, and we can delve into that a little more. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And public information report.
I'm going to defer to our police chief, I think. Blaine wants to make some statements.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So it's been a busy week, actually for everyone in the city, including council.
It's Tuesday.
And it's Tuesday. It's Tuesday. It feels not like Tuesday. So I just wanted to make some announcements. We just got through with making a public We just got through with making a public presentation on the state of public safety in the city at the pavilion this afternoon, and tomorrow we will be making the same presentation at the forum at CASA, and it will be somewhat condensed, because I believe we have a little less time. It will be. It'll be good. We'll condense it. So it'll be about a thirty-minute presentation, forty minutes max, and we'll have about twenty minutes for questions, and that's tomorrow at eight AM.
Either that, or Barbara and I get together and we drag you off, okay?
Yes. So then, on Thursday, we will be doing another very similar type of presentation that we will be doing at the forum at Cobble Creek at 6:00 PM, and that will last till 7:00 PM. And then we'll be right back to the Spanish Comp Plan meeting and Centennial, in the Centennial Room here at the city, where we'll do about a fifteen-minute presentation that will be translated into Spanish, so I'll have to be very succinct. Having said that, it's also been a busy last couple weeks since last time we met. We did have a shooting on North Grand Avenue that consisted of two individuals at about 3:00 AM in the morning that decided to trade shots up and down the street. We got several panicked calls from citizens. That also, in a separate incident than last Friday, we ended up getting a report of a man waving a gun in front of a residence over, close to Roma Court, and when our officers arrived, we ended up detaining some individuals. However, one of them ran from us. We were forced to taze that individual in front of Columbine School where we recovered a tactical vest in his possession, a handgun, and a large amount of drugs. So as I've said before, the situation in Montrose continues to change, and we have a problem, as you all know, and we're all discussing and trying to educate our citizens. So if you have any questions, I can answer those, and otherwise I'll return. Thank you.
But I want to announce on behalf of DART that the final acoustic Tuesday at the Pocket Park will be next Tuesday, August 27, 5 o'clock, with Donnie Morales.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thirty-three minutes, we're out of here.